We have a work session calling our work session in order for September 11, 2025. The time we are in order, and no guest speakers. We go down to old business. Old business, we have a three, uh, final review of change made by section 2479 Recreation of Vehicle Park, final review of proposed tree preservation ordinance, and final review of the proposed preferent tree and plant offer. We also have item on new business as well, so we're going to, uh, going to our old business first. The, uh, change on 2479, review of the change. Any, open for discussion.
Staff has no comments, but y'all.
Y'all got any comments on? You, uh.
Um, we're on the RV ordinance?
Yeah.
Um, I was given a list of, um, some more suggestions to add to the RV park ordinance, and Doc made copies and handed those to everybody. Um, where you see the check marks on the first page, those are already covered in the ordinance that we discussed, uh, last month. So those, those parts have already been included. It's the ones that don't have the check marks that, um, are suggestions that are either slightly different or new. And so I just, um, would like an opportunity for us to look at those and discuss them and, and vote. Um, Doc, I didn't know if you wanted to, to read these and give your comments about each one?
All right, so, uh, I'll just go through them in the order that they're, they're listed, and I'll ignore the, uh, ones that have check marks. So the first one is campground RV park shall be at least five contiguous acres, not separated by roadway, a road right of way, public or private, or any body of water.
Uh, only RV park, RV and campground should be separate.
Right, so, I'm sorry, yeah, they are separate. I'm sorry, this is for the RV ordinance only, not the campground ordinance. Sorry about that.
All right. Got restriction on campground. Okay. On that next, you, you have it listed on 43322, so you want to strike that? Campground.
So just to make it easier when we get to the actual meeting, if one of y'all are going to make an amendment to include any of these, then if in the work session, y'all would just go ahead and kind of give me a direction on whether you want me to add it or not. That way we can make the amendment, uh, easy, because I can just mark it all on my sheet, and then you can make an amendment based off that.
Okay.
And if you want staff opinion on anything, just let me know. I'll expand on it.
And the proposed additions, that's what we've already proposed, right?
Um, on this, so I've put check marks by the ones that are already included.
I'm talking about page two.
Oh, page two?
And three.
Yeah, these are.
Those are the ones we've already done.
We've already done those, right, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
So the, the first one you would be considering adding is the 4.331.
Mount the campground, right?
But, but, yes, correct, not for the campground ordinance, just for the RV ordinance.
Same thing on two, 3.22.
Yeah, and then down on 10.
And from a staff perspective, I don't really have any comments on the first item. It's unlikely that that scenario would come up, but if it did, I don't see any reason not to include it.
All right, okay.
And on the 4332, I believe we have the language that RV park shall be developed in a manner that preserves natural features and landscape. I believe that's already included in our ordinance, but it's the second sentence that says, "No filling of wetlands for development of an RV park is allowed." So that means, you know, they can't go in and masquerade and fill in a, a wetland area to build the RV park on it. They need to leave those natural features in place. That's what that additional language would mean.
No delineations.
That makes sense. That's it, that all I mean, anymore.
Well, there's 4.338, and we could, we could institute that one for county roads, but of course, if it's SC DOT road, then, you know, we have no authority over it, so.
Make a note on that, so we can, uh, break it down to what it really means.
So is that one that should be added, or is it?
I'm gonna leave that up to y'all. I'm just making sure you understand that, of course, that only applies to things that are inside of our jurisdiction.
So if we put that language in there, we need to specifically say county roads?
Well, I mean, you don't have to specify, but of course, we can't force DOT to approve or disapprove anything.
Right, but I think.
It would only apply to county roads regardless, is basically what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think in the future, for anyone that's looking and reading the ordinance, that they would have that understanding that it could, we could only use that on county roads, not state roads. It, it just clarifies it for future PC members and CC members that the state roads are not in our jurisdiction.
Okay, I made a note of it. And I believe everything else.
I think it's everything.
List is already in the ordinance.
Right, there's a check mark to it. And then, um, page two are some additions, additional language, um, that's suggested.
Those are already listed on.
Um, do we have the surface grade of 2%? What is, is there?
Yeah, I remember that, right, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I missed that part when I was reviewing it. So, um, I don't know if the, the second comment's necessary. It just says, "No RV park zoned property within the county shall be used for any purpose other than an RV park."
So there's no RV park zoning, so.
Right, there's not, it's not zoned. I think what their meaning is, if it's been, it's been, if it's an approved RV park, then that's the only thing it can be used for. Like you can't set up a, you know, used car lot in there. That's what I'm saying. Like it could only be used for that. I think that's what they were looking for, is if it's an approved RV park, and then it's no longer an RV park, you can't, or you can't mix, you can't mix-use it.
I gotcha.
Does that make sense?
So, we'll, we'll rephrase that to an, an approved RV park cannot be, uh, multi-use.
Okay. So the third one is asking that the RV park, um, once it's no longer being used, that it's restored by the landowner to the previous, um, I, I don't think the zoning is, um, what it is, but I think they're, I think what they mean is, if the RV park is defunct and it's empty, that the landowner needs to restore the, the land. I think that's what their intention is with that one, that we, you can't let an RV park owner abandon the business and just leave it there. That they need to restore the land. Right, yes, I think that's the intention there with that meaning. And I'm sure, Doc, you know how to word that better.
Yeah, I'll have to wordsmith it a little bit.
Okay.
How extenuating is that gonna be to, as far as removing everything, pads, everything?
Yeah, I, well, that or.
Yes, I mean, if, if you're gonna, just like with cell towers, I mean, if a cell tower goes defunct, then they have to remove the tower, they have to remove the base, they have to remove everything. They don't have to replant it or anything like that, but they have to remove the infrastructure that was installed.
Yeah, I mean, and.
Now, if it's a road or something like that that's been put in, then of course, if they have another use that they're gonna propose and go back through the process of coming through the county, then of course, they can use the same road infrastructure or something like that, if they had a plan, but otherwise, then yeah, I'd say just make them take it out.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a matter of just restoring the land, um, if it's not gonna be sold to another RV park owner that's gonna continue the park or use for another purpose, but I think the intention is, they just can't leave, leave the pads and, and everything in there if nobody's coming in and using the land and using that infrastructure.
It's kind of confusing, because it says, "RV park zoned properties shall be restored by landowner to the previous zoning designation," and that's more of a zoning issue than it is a restoration issue.
Yeah, I, I think, right, I just, I think that they relate to an approved use as zoning, even though approving a use on a piece of land has nothing to do with changing the zoning on the land.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, I think, but I believe that the intention.
I think it's just a confusion thing.
Yeah, the, the intention was that the land would be restored, even though the, the language isn't exact.
Yeah, because there's nothing about land in it.
Yeah, but I believe, I understand what the intention is with the language.
All right, well, the next one is DES, so we will not be including that. Uh, so after that, we got, "RV park shall have 100-foot undisturbed vegetative buffer along any waterway, creek stream, river, or similar water body, and/or pond or lake." I don't know if I'd want to include a buffer there. I mean, if you had a lake, would you not want, the whole purpose would be to enjoy the lake, I would think.
Right, that would make sense, right.
We do have 100-foot setback, yes.
Okay.
Uh, the next one, "All springs and other waterways must be clearly identified on any RV park development proposals." Fine with that. "Any culvert installations must be two times wider than normal flow of waterway to allow for animal passage." I'm not even sure I really understand that one.
I don't need that, that doesn't make too much.
I've, I've seen, like, animal passageways put in so that animals can get through developments and, uh, other areas. It's actually kind of popular with interstate highways, you know, basically it's a crossing under the street where deer and other things can go through. Never seen one done for an RV park, and I don't know that you'd want to direct them through a stormwater pipe.
See, a, a, an animal passing down a waterway are diff, they're two different items.
Well, I mean, if it was a bad rain and they tried to get in there, that would be, but, uh, I, I, I don't think that we need to put that in our ordinance, since we don't have any say on what size the stormwater pipes in a development are. Um, DES does the sweep, so, you know, they have to design their system to be approved by the state, which is not something we really have any say in, so. "There shall be an onsite emergency warning system, which is not internet-dependent, that can be heard at every RV and campsite within the facility." I don't.
I don't see why that.
Know what we're warning them for. So I think, uh, that one would require some clarification.
Yeah, do we have any type of emergency warning systems in the county?
I mean, we have, we have, we have, we have air raid sirens for like tornadoes and things of that nature.
But that's not the entire, it's not, that doesn't cover the entire county, or does it?
Of course, no, not in rural areas.
Yeah.
They're, they're, the siren horns are at the fire departments.
But what is it gonna go off for?
Say what?
I don't see why that ain't important, no different.
The, the fire tower goes off, you know, like a, like.
But what would we have when a tornado is a natural disaster?
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that's what they mean, but I don't actually have the context, so I'm not sure what they, they mean by emergency warning system. So I, I would say you mark that, get some clarity, and you can make an amendment some other time to, uh, to address that if you want to.
Now, that's, the next one make a little sense.
"RV park owners must have an emergency operation plan that includes a two-way emergency communication system with backup power source."
Who's it gonna be two-way with?
We're requiring onsite personnel to be there at all times.
Okay, that's one person, one way, but what's the other two-way? Who is it gonna be?
The emergency operation plan is required already. I don't know what the two-way emergency communication system is communicating to.
I just don't see that one.
From an emergency standpoint, you have to have two people on the two ways.
Right, and well, if it's not 911, what would be the point?
Exactly.
So you would just call 911. Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's necessary. "All patrons of the RV park must be provided with an emergency operations plan that includes a communication system." Again, I don't.
That, that would not, no, that's not appropriate.
I'm not, I'm not sure what that's. For RV parks where any portion of the subject property is located in a special flood hazard area. Okay, so that's, that's page three. That's just telling you to go to page three. "All communal, communal structures shall have the finished floor of such structure located three feet above the BFE." Um, so this is already in our ordinance under the flood base, the flood elevation section. We already, we already make people design above the base flood elevation, if they're in a notable flood zone, but it has to be a FEMA flood zone, not a, we think it's a flood zone.
So we have that in our ordinances already, you're saying?
Yes, we, and we just rewrote it in, I wanna say, 2019. FEMA required us to rewrite it. "All structure materials shall utilize blood-resistant materials. RV sites shall be at least three feet above the BFE." All right, so I'm just gonna go back through a quick review of things that we know y'all, y'all are in, probably in favor of. So the first one is, "RV park shall have at least five contiguous acres, not separated by roadway, uh, right of way, public or private, or any body of water." This is the first one. Second one is, "RV park shall be developed in a manner that preserves natural features landscape," but the big, the bigger picture is no delineation of wetlands, which we will specify separately. "All drives shall be located at least 150 feet from any street intersection, shall be designated in a manner conductive with safe ingress and egress on county roads." "An approved RV park cannot be multi-use and must be restricted to its primarily approved, uh, primary approved use." "RV parks have to restore to as original condition as possible after the cessation of RV park use within six months." "All springs and other wa, waterways must be clearly identified in any RV park development proposal." And that's it. Those are the ones, in my opinion, most appropriate, but y'all can discuss it amongst yourselves.
Okay. Am I clear on that right now?
Yes.
Okay. No, we don't make a motion now. "I have a proposed tree preservation ordinance." Review on that. Question? Who pet peeve that is? Pet peeve? Okay. Any, any comments on it? Tree preservation?
Um, I, I do have a question on, um, C, under applicability. Doc, can you, can you clarify for me, um, does this apply to industrial development?
No. Typically speaking, in, industry goes into industrial parks, which are designated, and there, there's a very detailed and complicated process to get an industrial park certified. So it's a, kind of a separate area. Industries do occasionally pop up outside of it, but, you know, like rock quarries.
Right.
But no applicability would be to commercial, multifamily residential, and major residential subdivision. That's what it would apply to.
Okay, and then in section two, um, the trophy trees definition, DBH, um, could you clarify what that means?
The diameter base.
What, diameter base?
So how?
Oh, diameter at breast height, oh, okay. I knew it had to do with diameter, but I, I really didn't understand what the BH stood for.
Basically, don't plant, you know, saplings. You have to, you have to plant a tree, not a sapling.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't understand what the BH stood for.
More questions?
Sorry. I think, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read. I think we had mentioned, uh, using someone with some expertise on determining if a tree was, um, damaged beyond, you know, saving it and it needed to be removed, that we, it was gonna be like an, oh, there, I see it, an arborist, certified arborist. Yep, I said, thank you. I knew we had added that word in, and couldn't find it while I was trying to skim. Doc, um, do we have any requirements on the developer if they're having to take down, you know, significant trees and, and they're gonna replace it? Do we have any requirement to know that, um, like, like a bond for them, saying you have, like, the money, right? The bond is the money to prove they have, to prove they have the money to do that, right? Like, if you, do we have, what guarantee do we have?
So they would, they would either have to complete any assigned work, basically, they would have to pass an inspection showing that they already replanted the required trees before they could get a final plat, or they would have to put up a bond in the amount of the work that would be required to do it. So, he, there are many jurisdictions in the state that will allow a developer to plat out before infrastructure is completed, but Edgefield County does not. We require infrastructure to be completed before a final plat is done. If it's something minor, um, a lot, just to use an example, Heritage put up a bond to finish one of their buffer yards on the front side. So if it's something like that, then we'll allow a bond for that specific thing, but generally speaking, um, your infrastructure has to be complete, or you're going to have to bond the whole thing out.
So that's covered under another ordinance?
Yes.
And that's why we don't see something like that in the tree ordinance? Because you have it covered in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
More? Looks at the, uh.
I do, but.
The current tree, the list, tree and plant list? Yeah, comments on that?
Sorry, I'm being the heel tonight. I, um, kept looking for the list, uh, for tree species that are found in the Edgefield County Piedmont Sand Hill area. So I finally did a search, um, and many of the trees are on our list, but I'd, um, and David, I probably need to give this to you, because I know you're, this is your area of expertise, David. But I found some species listed that are not, not in our tree list, and I was wondering if we could look at those and add them in, because these are species that, um, my AI result, search result says that are common for our area. I'm gonna take one, pass them down. So I was wondering if we could add these species, make sure these species are included in our tree list.
I mean, my only comment as staff is, you can add whatever trees and take whatever trees off that you want. Um, I don't know enough about tree species to give you a recommendation on what's good or not good, so I'll defer to David on that one.
Yeah, I would. I'm sorry, April, I couldn't hear ya.
We removed some of the one, a couple of, uh, the trees that were on here, when we originally sent this out to you guys, and so we just removed those. And I did replace a couple.
I know personally, I don't care for sweet gums or pines, but those are natural to Edgefield County.
You don't use sweet gums in there?
Well, it was a sweet gum that knocked down, you know, went in my house from the hurricanes, so I don't like them anymore.
I don't think I know about a point there, you know, but each tree got its purpose, and so, uh, it's to kill environment. I know some thing get aggravating, but that's part of, uh, what, you know, part of growth. It's got a purpose, right? Some obsession, and might not be a suitable in some of it. In a way, we give different information right now, then. We gotta do, yeah, we gotta do it, move on. Get them on that right now, Doc. We need to move on.
Um, do you have any comments, David?
Comments on a tree?
I would just ask, um, Tracy, this list that you gave me, are you asking, should all of these be included in the canopy grand trees, or just be used to count for canopy density?
I'm not a tree expert, I'd have to defer to your opinion on that.
I would say things like sweet gum that, that you don't, a lot of people don't like certainly go toward the canopy. I would say things like sweet gum that, that you don't, a lot of people don't like certainly go toward canopy density.
Mm-hmm.
For a development, you probably are less concerned about them as grand trees, as they're, um, more of a short-lived.
Yeah.
Tree. That would be my only comment. Anything that's native should go toward canopy density, but only, um, long-lived, um, quality trees should count towards the canopy grand trees, in my opinion. I think this list is, is pretty comprehensive for canopy grand trees, though there are a few ornamentals that should be taken off. For example, um, probably zelkova, uh, things like that, but other nests is pretty good there.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna defer to you, you know, to your expertise on that. Um, I just wanna make sure that we included every, every possible, uh, native species that would be, you know, good to be cultivated and added.
So, are, let me ask the staff, are you, are you considering canopy grand trees as trees that would be planted in a buffer?
Either in a buffer or.
Or just trees to count towards the canopy density?
True, to count.
Okay, then the list is fine if it just counts toward the canopy density. I don't know that we wanna encourage some of these things being planted in a buffer.
And it seems like it's got the flowering dogwood on there, and I do not think at this point in time we want to put, even though I love them, they're beautiful, but they are under siege by a pest that is native to here, and people are losing them, and if we allow that, then they'll be replanting.
I think that's a case where if there's a cultivar of that native species that's resistant to pests, then as we learn about it, we should name that cultivar as the acceptable.
Right.
Replacement.
So far, I don't know the one, because I planted all of them in my yard, and they've all gone, and so, we've lost all of them.
Actually, come to think of it, I, I have a, a different general idea, and I'll, I'll defer to the attorney on this, but, kinda like we do other schedules in the county, would it be possible for, uh, county council to approve the tree, you know, latest addition of the tree list? That way you don't have to actually stick it in the ordinance and then go back and update it by ordinance? It could just be updated by resolution or a single vote of the planning commission? That way, you know, if in two years, the lists, or the trees we wanna change, or bushes, or whatever.
I would say we could have it, like, the most recent list provided, I don't know who provides the list or where it comes from.
So we created it. So, so we, well, she, she got it from Clemson.
Right.
Originally, but, um, I'm just saying, you know, kinda like we do a fee schedule, you know, council often refers to it in the ordinances as a secondary item, C, the fee schedule. Could you do it the same way as C, the approved tree list?
Do that.
And then that way, your tree list could just be updated by resolution?
Be by resolution, yes.
So that might be an option, instead of doing it as an ordinance, you have it referenced in the tree preservation ordinance, and then that way, whenever it needs to be updated, we can just have a single vote and update the approved tree list.
That makes sense.
I mean, does that work for y'all?
Yeah. That makes sense to me.
My question is, are we going to hold off on voting on the list itself until next month? Or you wanna just read out what we want to add individually and as, and say, yes, we wanna add that and vote on it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be just to proceed as normal, and then when we get it to council, we'll, we'll modify the language of the actual tree preservation ordinance to reference it directly as an attachment to the tree ordinance. If that's okay with everybody.
Okay, new business. And then there is a plot review for a proposed dog boarding facility located on 2.56 acre part, portion of Saber Lane in Trenton, that parcel number 175 double out, double out, 106 triple out. Is it packed, the hot, hot, holly? Uh, would you come up to the front? How you pronounce that, packed? Packed, yes, I'm coming. Would you kinda give us a rundown of what you got going?
Um, it's just a small boarding facility, it will have like 12 indoor/outdoor, um, kennels. Um, it's on our property, um, I wanted to be a family business to be able to help provide for my family. Um, also, I licensed an electric technician, um, so, um, for family reasons, I had to stop working a couple of years ago, and this is something that I can do to be able to help, um, and something that I wanna do. Um, it'll have three let-out yards, um, it's a private business, um, more geared to people who have the more stressed-out animals in a larger setting, um, or in a quieter setting, they'll be out majority of the day playing, and, um, they're in a secure building at night. Um, they'll be like early let-out, late, um, let-out and things like that, so they're kinda adhering to their normal schedule as possible, um, so, um, but at night, it won't be, there won't be anything outside as far as noise or anything. Um, so, I don't, it'll have indoor play yard as well, as far as like inclement weather, or when it's hot, they'll indoor, and then if it's cold, then they'll be, um, you know, indoor/outdoor kinda rotating, depending on the weather. I'm not sure what else.
The facility is for 12 dogs?
Um, 12 runs, um, I would probably say, um, 24 probably max. It just depends on the size of the animal. Um, if it's like a hundred-pound dog, it'll probably be in a run by itself, you know, smaller dogs, two may go together. Um, they won't be like packed or anything like that, it'll be, still have plenty of room, mainly people who are, have the same families. Um, if they can board together, they'll board together, um, if not, they'll be separated, I mean, it's, um, but it's not something I'm planning on having, you know, things packed and things like that, but, um, no, it's, um, they have a couple of different sizes, um, things like four-by-fours, five-by-fours, things, you know, different ranges that have like two family runs, so people who have more, um, than like two dogs can be in comfortably. Um, they'll have access to go outside throughout the day while I'm there, um, through, through the, the door, and of course, I'll be letting them out, um, to play and to, um, either by themselves, or if they're okay with other dogs, depending on what the owner says, they're ten per minutes, I do that too. Um, but when I'm not there, they'll be secured inside the building.
And it's solely boarding, and that's it?
Mm-hmm.
So would this create, um, jobs? Would you have to hire other people to help you?
Potentially, um, it won't be much, um, right now, I expect to be by myself with me and my family by the year, so. And then it's, so if you wanted to, it's not a huge facility, so it's not like I would need a lot of people.
I rode by the property the other day, because I live in that area, but, but, um, how far back is the, are you planning on?
It's gonna be in the front.
The very front?
Yes. Um, it's gonna not be like right on the road, but it's, um, figured professionally, I don't think people will be riding down a long driveway behind the house to be able to, um, you know, drop their dogs off and things like that, so it's kind of a, on the sides, it's still gonna be covered by what's on our property, um, so it's not like it's gonna be visible, visible, but, um.
On the side?
Yeah, they'll have a road access to it, um, a road, like a little driveway and a small parking lot, so.
It's pretty heavily wooded, from what I can tell, right?
Yeah.
Only to the side.
Yes, it's.
Further back, behind, okay.
The driveway's a little bit, um, longer down, so I still have room in between our house and the kennel too, so.
So there's a resident on the property in there, the resident where you live?
We live there.
Okay.
Me and my family, yes, sir. Also be good to, I'm there, I'm closer to them and able to monitor them.
What if they get out?
They get.
Do you have a provision to try to?
Um, we'll have, um, it'll be both privacy and length, um, link.
Okay.
Um, some parts of it, we'll have things underneath it, and, um, it'll be high enough, um, and nobody's gonna be off-leash that, you know, that's gonna be one of the questions, is he known for a fence, and I'm, and they're not gonna be outside unless I'm there.
Right.
So it's not like I'm gonna go let one out and then go do some laundry or something, they'll be out there when I'm out there.
On the, uh, wave water control, I see it's been approved, uh, what you got, a, a set, system to take care of waves or what, the deal on that?
She had, she's already had her perk test.
The perk test is, um.
So you're, you're gonna put in a separate tank for that?
A separate septic in, well.
Right.
And the septic will have a hair trap.
Any, any comments from anybody, any questions? I didn't get a chance to look at it, I'm only, you know, I was just on, my biggest concern is with basic, what kind of buffering? Like, I should've gone down and looked at it, I haven't been out there yet, see what buffering cause, with dogs, you need a good buffering cause. Dog be attracted by seeing and hearing, and they can get, be a nuisance. You know, when you got them inside and they can't see or something, you know, okay, but when they get out, and they see this, and they go, you know, like this barky in there, and the tennis and the animals and so forth, that's my concern on that. Otherwise, I think that can be handled with a typical type of buffering cause.
Wouldn't be too much of a difference than what's already out there, um, and my neighbors know what I'm doing, and they don't have an issue or anything like that.
Not, not yet, they don't have an issue yet.
No, because it's not gonna be where it's gonna be, all of them are out at one time.
Right.
There's, um, noise concerns are not something, I mean. We have a five acres in between me and the one to the left, um, to the right. Um, I'm not sure about the acreage, but there's, um, there's still a good portion between me and then the property to the next side, they're actually building there, um, and then there's some behind us, but it's not like directly, I mean, there's still plenty of woods in between.
About anything.
There's not a house in front, it's somebody's property, but it's just blank, just cleared out, so.
So you got, you got two and a half, 2.5, six acres here, I got no problem with that, but, uh, and my only concern about the privacy of the dog, the, the, uh, because they can be a nuisance. They can be a nuisance, because I've been, I've been fooling with dogs for 80 years, they can be a nuisance. And what I'm saying is that, you know, dogs are attracted by animals and people and all that, so, uh, when you got, when you got them running loose, the less they see the better off they are. Before it causes a problem, and, uh, and I'm trying to hit the problem in the head before it get to be a problem, you know, I wouldn't want. That's it, you get.
One can disrupt an entire nice set of dogs, so that's the only thing.
So we're, we're looking at that and see what we can.
It's just so unknown.
Yeah, I know, it's like, you got the, you got the little dog to call the problem with the big dog. But anyway, any more questions, come here, we, we'll discuss the further on the, uh.
Yeah.
On the, okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, we got the, uh, proposed communication, communication tower that will be located on a 143 acre park, off of Lake Fork Lake, over in Edgefield, off, off of 230 Lake Fork Road, park, IDO 73 double out, double out, zero, 10, three, represented from APC Tower. Is someone here from there? Come up there and state your name and give us your, and so forth.
I'll do my best, I didn't do public speaking in college, but, uh, Bill Lee, uh, we're Kimley Horn here on behalf of Kim, of, uh, APC Towers and T-Mobile, uh, trying to propose a 255-foot God Tower. Um, pretty cut and dry, it's 255-foot tower, inside of a 60-by-60-foot compound, which is inside a 100-by-100-foot lease area. Uh, going to the tower will be a 20-foot wide easement, access to utility, and a 12-foot, 12-foot wide gravel road going up to it. Um. Meets all setbacks, regulations, codes by jurisdiction. That was, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it, this is the phone tower. If, uh, you got any questions, I'd, I'd more than happy to answer.
255 feet tall, right? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the. Okay, on your guys.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have the offense in a little?
Yeah, they'll normally have like a, a small fenced in area around the God anchors.
Right.
Um, they're about, it's just a little triangle, about 10 by 15, it's not too big.
I'm just curious, um, on the aerial, it shows a cleared area, it looks like with the driveway and, and a building. What, is that still there, or what is that?
On the aerial?
It's a house?
Further towards Lake Port Road, if you'll turn to page 15.
Mm-hmm, but it's on the same parcel of land, right? So that's, somebody lives there?
I click that, okay, you're talking about the house right here?
Yeah.
With the long driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, well, where our tower's located, 255-foot, if you look at, I don't know if y'all have, um, our site plan, but.
It's, it's in there.
Okay. Two, a falls, we don't even have an engineered falls zone, because we've.
For exhibit B, in your packet.
Yeah. The, the house is way outside the falls zone of the tower, like, the house looks like it's 1,500 feet away. The falls zone's 255.
Yeah, I was just curious, I didn't, uh, I, I was expecting a complete empty parcel, you know, with nothing on it, so, I was just curious if that was, if that's an old satellite picture, or if that's still there, if somebody's still living there.
It's, it's still there.
It's still there.
The person leasing this to them lives there.
Okay. You gotta get it here. Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, I just didn't know if it was still there or not, because you don't know how old the satellite picture is.
So you representing APC Tower then, right?
APC and T-Mobile, yes, sir.
So they gonna, is the tower gonna be for Lisa to other?
Um, so.
For Lisa, yes.
APC Towers is the ones who build the towers, and then T-Mobile leases a spot on the tower to put their antennas. So, we just engineer them.
So will it be available for other companies to lease on it too?
Yes, sir, it has two available co-location spots, so like AT&amp;T, Verizon, some, somebody can come in there, put it, some antennas on there if they wanted to.
Okay. Any more comment, question? Okay. I think we're done, I'm all in track, okay, thank you. You, you don't have a question?
That's right.
Zero cell phone service in the interior, and that's a very popular camping spot, my three boys go camping all the time, and I have to drive up there to find them, because there's no way to get stuff to them, so I think that any cell phone carriers up there would be a great, great deal.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we got one more out of here. Review, uh, application for additional RA zoning, with the application from Jared Moody, his county council five includes 39 parcels in the Mel, Melway area. And a second application is from Lisa, this Lisa up here, okay, commission, district three includes 186 parcels in Wind Ridge area. Okay, the Moody area, are these, both of those included in the same, they're two different applications, right?
So they're two separate applications, and, um, well, they're both here, so if you have questions.
Mr. Moody, you wanna come up? You got any comment?
Jerry Moody, council, district number five. Reason this was asked to me by the landowners down there, after y'all started coming up with the RA and everything, as you probably know also, since they came to you, they wanted some protection down there, they kept seeing these little small, sub divisions pop up, and so, we came to the planning commission, talked to Sharon, Tracy, who lives down that way. Tracy's, I mean, Sharon's been getting phone calls too, and Tiffany's the other one that was included in some of this, and so that's why we're presenting it to y'all, because that's what the landowners down there want. Any questions?
Question, no question, okay.
Thank y'all.
You wanna present your case, sir?
Same thing.
Okay.
I got stopped on the way in to this meeting tonight by a landowner, saying please, 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 so that's why. And we are kinda on Windy Ridge and that area there, we're kinda vulnerable. With the industrial park being behind the majority of that, and there are properties that are, are pretty large plats of land. That, you know, if something were to happen, then, you know, the industrial park could, or someone else could come in. And lay, let's play house, so. It's pretty much, I'm trying to look at it from an area of preserving it, the mainly people that are down Windy Ridge, and this will go all the way to Betis Academy. That's the air, the area in black and uh. Pretty much to preserve it for rural agriculture, which is basically what's down there now, and. I, I do believe that it should be zoned something, so, and with everything that's happened up until now, had it been that way, we wouldn't be here.
Any questions from, uh, no question, okay, no question, then that should take care of.
What part of Betis is it?
That's a. At the back of.
It's, uh, it's in the purple.
Or the pink.
It's because the town line is right over that, so that's kinda stuff.
Right down below Dragons Lair, uh, right above Dragons Lair?
This area right here is the H O County Industrial Park.
Yeah.
This right here is Windy Ridge, and then that comes off Sable down here, that's Sable.
I'm talking about where it touches, she said it touched Betis, where's it touching Betis at?
So it touches, uh. Uh, Nicholson Road right here.
And Nicholson?
And Nicholson goes out to Betis, if this were, hold on, let me uh.
I know where you at. Nicholson's where Betis uh school is, right?
Yeah, right.
Yep, well.
It goes back.
Yeah.
In that kind of. Intersection, that's where.
So this is the larger area, and y'all probably remember, um, I've tried to zone this area about three, maybe even four times over the last. Eight years and, uh, never successfully got it zoned, though I have tried, um, the last time we tried to zone it, we tried to zone it RR. Specifically took out of that zoning, so this is, this is the only remaining area that's not zoned, it is completely surrounded by zoning.
That's the area you want in there, right? Okay, any more? Yeah, call our business section to join me, and uh, we got about two minutes, we have a regular meeting. Me and the chairman, we're gonna take a quick break, take a.
State.
The constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the commission. Glad to have you. You're welcome. I need a motion of approval of the agenda for tonight. September eleventh.
I make a motion to approve, but before we do that, I would like to make a statement. It's Fab's birthday. And he is our fearless leader, so I wanted to let us all know and say happy birthday to our Fab.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
If I can make eight or three more, I'll be doing good. In front of our record, you know, I'm the oldest, I've been serving ever since the planning commission been here. And I don't think I missed about two meetings that whole time. Until I had the right, right. But anyway, we appreciate serving, enjoyed it, been a challenge, but I look forward to serving as long as I can. Okay, at this time, we'll have approval, motion approval.
Second.
Motion is second, that we approve the agenda for tonight, all in favor, right hand. Posits, eyes have it. I need a motion for approval of the minutes of August fourteenth work session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, said motion with right hand. I need a motion for approval of the meeting for August fourteenth.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, in the right hand. And I need a motion for the work session for July the tenth.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, said motion with right hand. Approval for the meeting for July the tenth.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, said motion with right hand. Good, appreciate it. I mean, report staff, you report on the plat reviews and center reports. Can I have a minute?
Hey, in front of you, you have your census report with all our new, the new construction that's happened to date. Plat reviews, I had six exempt, seven minor, and five plat reviews. The pending land development application for the RV park is still in review. There's no final decisions that have been made on that. The end of their continuance will be October the ninth. It's been, October ninth is the last day of their continuance.
Okay. Any comments, question? Appreciate that, that's how you was thinking about it. Uh, next is on our list is, uh, public hearings. We have a number of public hearings here tonight. The proposal to public, planning commission regular meeting allowed for comment from citizen regarding the public hearing. I don't know the agenda during this meeting. Citizen, if you, she'll be assigned up if you want to speak, it don't matter. Each citizen should be eligible to speak for a maximum of five minutes. All citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing should be submitted to recognition by the chairman. And address the side office directly, written comment may be submitted to the county plan before the meeting, which would be read during this public hearing session. And we have a few here. First of it is the proposed dog boarding facility located off Sable Lane in Trenton. Partica ID one seventy-five, double out, double out, one oh six, triple out. Any? None?
Yeah, there's, there's one that was emailed in. But there's, there's no one signed up. But I'm gonna read this.
Read, read, okay.
Dear members of the planning commission, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed dog boarding facility, Bella Grace Kennels LLC Plan for Parcel One Seventy-Five at One Oh Six, located directly across from my property on Sable Lane in Trenton. While I respect the applicant's intentions, I have serious concerns about the impact this facility will have on surrounding community, particularly due to the absence of natural or engineered noise abatement measures. My key concerns are, one, noise pollution and nuisance. Etro County Ordinance, Chapter Six, Section Six dash thirty-one prohibits animals from unreasonably annoying humans or substantially interfering with the rights of persons to the enjoyment of life and property of facility housing up to thirty-six dogs with multiple outdoor let-out yards will inevitably generate persistent barking and noise well over a hundred decibels, especially during early morning and late evening hours without natural buffers or engineered sound barriers. This facility poses a direct violation of this ordinance. Two, zoning and land use compatibility. The proposed site is currently unzoned, which raises concerns about the lack of regulatory oversight and long-term land use planning. The absence of zoning protections undermines the intent of the county's comp plan and opens the door to incompatible development. This facility will rely on septic and well system, which may be insufficient for wastewater demands for up to thirty-six dogs. Without a thorough environmental impact study, including stormwater runoff and odor control, the facility risks degrading local water quality and air conditions. And then traffic and safety, the planning commission packet notes that traffic study is pending. Just as a note on that, before I finish this, y'all have a copy of that traffic study. Increased traffic from customers, staff, and service vehicles on Sable Lane, a rural dirt, a rural dirt road, could pose safety risk and disrupt the quiet residential character of the area. My request for action, I urge the planning commission to deny or postpone approval of this facility until the following conditions are met. A comprehensive noise mitigation plan, another public hearing held with community input, a traffic impact study, the property is evaluated for appropriate zoning designation, and environmental impact assessment is conducted. Thank you for your time and consideration. I am unavailable to speak at the upcoming meeting due to family emergency and welcome further discussion with the commission and planning staff. Sincerely, Stephen and Karen Helms. They are located at one oh eight Sable Lane.
Okay, that's it? No more comments, okay? So we'll go down to our next hearing, would be the proposed telecom, uh, telecommunications town located off Lake Fork Road, Edfield, Partica zero seven five, double out, double out, zero ten, triple out.
None.
None?
None.
Okay. Our next would be the proposed tree preservation ordinance. Have any on that?
None.
None, okay. Our next would be the proposed preferred tree implant list for development.
One, Jeff Allen.
Hello, Jeff Allen, I live on Sable Lane. I collect native species of sandhills and Piedmont area. I have probably four hundred plus native species on my property, and I have a commercial greenhouse that I grow and collect native species. I do have professional graduate school training in native plant species. Uh, I, I do just, just a couple comments. There are some, there are some things that are just totally pedantic and you probably don't care about. There are some species here that are listed as native that aren't. There are some species that are not native that are. But more generally, I don't know exactly how this is, would be used, but there are some species here that if I was limited to these, there are a lot of other great native species that aren't used. So like example, nut all oak, there's nothing wrong with a nut all oak, but it's not native to South Carolina. But I could tell you five or ten other native oaks that it would be great to plant. So I guess, I don't know how limiting this is, but I, I could be frustrated as somebody that was knowledgeable about this. If you were telling me, I can use, you know, this non-native tree, but I can't use these other native trees. There, um, there is one other one that I would mention, just to be aware of. You have Eliagnus listed here with, with just the general common name and then the species of Abingiai. Eliagnus is one of the, Eli, there are three species of Eliagnus, which are now illegal in South Carolina, which you might want to add to your prohibited species that was added a couple of years ago. This is a hybrid of one of the illegal species and one that's not. So it's not technically illegal, but it's probably not one that would be one you necessarily want to recommend. Anyway, I was just gonna offer, if anybody ever wants any, uh, just consult on this, I'd be more than happy to make some recommendations. But generally, I, I would just be a little skeptical of limiting people to using, because this, this is not, um, how do I say this? There are some issues here for somebody who would be like more knowledgeable about it.
Can I comment on that real quick?
Yes.
It's a preferred species list, so it's, so that's not saying you, you can't plant other species, except for the ones that are expressly forbidden. Uh, there, there is a small section at the back where it's prohibited trees.
I saw those too.
But those are the only ones that are absolutely prohibited.
Okay.
These are just preferred trees, and, um, once we work it out with county council, we can sit down and discuss and, and alter the list and, and make it better.
That, that's the most important thing to me, would just say that you weren't limiting somebody. You may want to add the, the recent Eliagnus species, which are now prohibited in South Carolina.
Change it to a proposed or a preferred instead of approved, maybe that would make.
That would be.
Yeah, it'd be, okay, alright. Okay, appreciate it, after having them on that. And our next is our proposed change to Section twenty-four seventy-nine recreational vehicle parks. Have any on that?
RV park ordinance, is that the same?
Okay.
Barry. Good evening. I'm Barry Hollenberg, I live on Vermoak Road. I wanted to talk to you tonight about black water spills from RV parks. An RV black water spill will undoubtedly contaminate adjacent and downhill property. This is a serious issue with absolute and irreparable environmental and health consequences, and this is how it happens. RV black water is waste from the toilet. It contains human waste and highly toxic chemicals added to break down the waste solids. The EPA and HHS consider black water to be a highly contaminated biohazard. Spills contaminate adjacent and downhill properties through several pathways. When a spill occurs on the ground, rain or irrigation will cause the contaminated water to flow across the surface and downhill into neighboring lands, streams, and ponds. Black water contains high concentrations of chemicals and harmful microbes such as E. coli and viruses. When it seeps into the ground, it will contaminate the soil. From there, it percolates down to the water table, thus polluting the groundwater, which is the source of drinking water for home wells downhill from, and, from an, a, a proposed RV park. If RV park septic systems are not properly maintained, or if they are overwhelmed by the chemical and biological content of the RV waste, they will fail. If an RV park is not built on level land and they experience a power outage, the electric pumps, which force the RV black water toxins and waste from the septic tanks up to the leach field will stop. The pumps will stop, but gravity will not stop. The chemical and biological sludge can flow back through the pipes downhill and come up in the RV toilets. And just too bad for the fellow who tries to clean up that mess with rags. The EPA says skin exposure to formaldehyde can cause organ necrosis. A splash in the eyes will cause blindness. And to quote the EPA directly, they state there is no known treatment for formaldehyde poisoning. Not to mention the dangers of E. coli, cholera, and typhoid and other gastrointestinal and respiratory diseases commonly found in RV black water. And it's also just too bad for the residents downhill from that RV park. By the way, the EPA also warns that insects contaminated with E. coli from spills will spread that disease to wherever they fly or crawl. The chemicals and excess nutrients such as nitrogen and phosphorus in black water harms the environment. They cause explosive algae growth in downstream lakes, ponds, rivers, and streams, creating dead zones where aquatic life cannot live. If the contamination reaches a nearby well or other drinking water source, it will pose a serious threat to the health of those who drink that water, cook, or wash with it. Chemicals in the waste will disrupt the biological balance of the soil, harming plants and animals, making the area downhill unsuitable for gardening or other healthy uses. Due to these risks, proper handling and disposal of RV black water must be strictly regulated and should only be done at designated dumping stations. RV park owners must be held responsible to ensure their sewage and septic systems are properly permitted, maintained, and operated to prevent spills and contaminations of their own property and surrounding downhill areas. In closing, an RV park grade surface must take into account the containment of RV spills. Berms must be required when there are adjacent streams, creeks, ponds, and wells. In order to keep Edgefield's citizens and environment safe now and for the future, stricter ordinances must prevent irresponsible land development proposals. Thank you.
Before we go to the next name, just as a reminder, if you want to speak about the proposed RV park ordinance changes, is that not correct? What we discussed?
This is, this is specific.
For the changes that we recommended tonight, that's what you need to sign up for. We're not here to litigate the RV park, we're just here to talk about the land changes, the ordinance changes. So when your name is called, step up, you have five minutes to speak. When you reach four minutes, you will be given your tone and stay on topic. And the topic is the changes that we have discussed tonight in regards to the RV park ordinance. That's what this meeting is about tonight, so.
Next name.
Thank you. Randy Dietrichson.
Evening Commissioner Burke.
Evening.
Fellow planning commissioners, my name is Randy Dietrichson, I'm the president of Horse Creek Nature Reserve. The American Disabilities Act is the primary source of federal law that dictates accessibility for public accommodations, including RV parks. It has specific requirements for the slope, surface, path, and parking, uh, the RV locations, and those specific, um, grade slope numbers. Running slope is five percent. Cross-slope is two point zero eight percent. Slope of RV site is two percent, and parking is two percent. Thank you.
Ashley Williams.
My name is Ashley Williams, I'm resident, um, rather next to the parcel, um, in the RV park. And I'm gonna talk to you tonight about the, um, transportation, treatability of the recreational vehicle wastewater that was conducted. Extracts from the report claim that, um, the recreational vehicle owners often use chemical toilet additives.
Ma'am.
Yes.
This is a, you are off the subject of this one right now.
Okay, so we're not gonna discuss any of this, are we?
It gotta be, it gotta be concerning, the proposed.
The proposed.
Changes.
Okay, the specific, okay, ordinance, okay. Next is Chris Thomas. Chris Thomas. Okay, next would be. Seventeen Vermoak, I can't read your name. Just the ones that we spoke on tonight, the changes to the ordinance only.
No, no.
No, we don't have anything to do, we voted that down, remember?
We'll talk about that.
List, Braxton. Okay.
Okay, uh, proposed zoning map change to RA and District Five, Jeremuta application, any, uh, on that one? Nope.
Give me one second, I want to give you a, I want to give you something to refer to. I want to give it to the chairman. Alright, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to each one of you for, for serving. Because I recognize that it is a, it is a time commitment, and it's a great investment that you're making into our county. First of all, the second thing is, my, my question that I want to ask you, the first question I want to ask you is if you received the email that I sent to you on Tuesday, the ninth. Everybody received it? Okay, great. I provided you a, a printed copy of it, which I'd like to have put into the minutes for tonight's meeting. But I'm not gonna speak about what I've already given you in writing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna use my time to talk about something else. I'd like to ask the county attorney a question. I, I know you, you are a real estate attorney in addition to serving the county, correct? Okay. I wondered if tonight you would be willing to explain to the planning commission economic, the term economic taking, and what that means, not specific to eminent. Okay, not specific to eminent domain, but to zoning laws.
I'm not re-prepared to right now, I'm sorry.
And I understand that, I do, I understand that. However, since you, you aren't prepared to talk about it tonight, I'd like to make a recommendation to the planning commission. I would like to.
I need a little notice, I need a little notice.
I'd like to make a suggestion that the planning commission hold an executive session jointly with the county council, with your attorney, to talk about the economic taking term and what it means. Not about eminent domain, but for zoning laws, and how it affects private property owners and their economic situation. My second request is that this body would postpone the business of F and G, so I'm not talking about either F or G, either of the two applications, I'm talking in general, the county right now, of, of adding these two hundred and twenty-four new tax IDs to the fifteen hundred, which have already been created in agricultural map. And the reason I would like you to postpone it is, I believe, after listening to the county council meeting both on August twelfth and on September, first Tuesday of September, I don't think the county council fully understands that term. And I'm not sure you do either. So I want to make sure that you do before you move forward with this proposed change. In addition to this extension providing the opportunity for you, it will also provide an opportunity for our citizens who are impacted by this change to do a little research. And I think that's important for two reasons, and I want to share those two reasons. The letters which were mailed for the August twelfth county council public hearing to the fifteen hundred tax IDs on agricultural district map were dated July fourteenth. The letters stated that the meeting would be held on August fifth. When it was discovered on July the twenty-ninth that the wrong date had been put on the letter, rather than postponing the county council public hearing, it was decided by council to mail a postcard, letting them know, letting citizens know about the new date. And I understand accidents happen, that's not the problem. The problem is the timeline. Because I know for a fact that some property owners came to the August fifth meeting because they had not gotten the postcard. And I know for a fact other property owners didn't get the postcard with the change or the letter until after the August twelfth meeting. So I know there are citizens that don't understand what's going on. I have one minute. The second reason is I learned this week, within the last seven days, that the planning commission public hearings don't have mail or sent to the individual property owners. So the two hundred and twenty-three or whatever tax IDs, they haven't received notification of this public hearing. Yes, it's on the website, yes, they, they have an opportunity to look at the website and look at the Edgefield advertising, but they weren't identified individually. So I think it's a good thing to postpone it, to let the individual property owners know what's going on. The final thing is, I believe the timelines for individual property owner notifications for both county council public hearings, as well as adding individual notifications for the planning commission public hearings, should be reviewed by county council. And I'd like to recommend that that would be reviewed on Tuesday, October the seventh. So thank you for your time, again, I appreciate y'all's service, thank you for taking the time to listen.
Alrighty, uh, on the proposed zoning map change to RA District Three, Lisa, let me take, you got the matter?
On behalf of Horse Creek, we'd like to thank Commissioner Whitaker for the responsible proposal to protect our neighbors on Windy Ridge. We would like to find out when do you plan to do that with Sable Lane, thank you.
Well, yeah, so Sable Lane's included in the proposed area. So all of Sable Lane is in that area as well as Windy Ridge.
Everything, if you'll look at the map, everything to Nicholson Road. We can't do anything about A can count. Country play. Whitlock. Citrus. Everything to Nicholson Road. Okay?
From where? From what, you said to Nicholson Road, but where does it start?
Starts at nineteen and Windy Ridge.
Alright, so next, that'll close our public hearing, appreciate everyone coming in. No old business, we'll get out to new business for tonight. Our first item will be vote and discussion regarding the proposed dog boarding facility to be located off Sable Lane in Trenton. ID one seventy-five, double out, double out, one oh six, triple out. At this time, uh, I'd like, so I want to entertain a motion to, uh, accept this, uh, proposal. Yeah, go ahead, get a motion.
Second.
It, you made the motion, huh? Okay, motion is second that we, uh, we approve the proposed dog boarding facility located off Sable Lane, Trenton, open for discussion? And discussion on it? About having? I just had one comment on it that, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't have any objection to it, but I'm concerned a bit about the buffer.
Yeah.
The buffer, I think that, you know, I think we need to approve it with the expectation that we can, you know, make some addition for the buffering on it.
Uh, I'll just go ahead and tell you that I haven't been out to the site, so I don't know what the existing.
I know neither, you're probably.
Nature of the parcel is. But rather than a buffer, you could request opaque fencing around the dog runs, that way they just can't see out. Of course, if she has the dogs like on leashes walking around, then that's not, that's not an issue. But if they're out in the run, then an opaque, an opaque fence would take care of any site issues.
Okay, yeah.
In lieu of the letter that we received, you know.
And if you, if you want, you can just make it conditional on sight lines of the property, I'd be happy to go out there and, and look. But it's, buffer yards are not a requirement.
Right.
By ordinance in a unzoned area, so I don't think you can really require them to buffer yard it.
I think I was thinking more on the setback, how, you know, how far back, because I noticed the property was so wooded and dense, that if it were set back a little bit further, that would probably eliminate a lot of dog noise, especially with the fence, you know, because it's gotta come, come through the foliage.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like on both sides, it's still my property, it's still my state with it.
Since this is a, a, a live discussion, if, if you could step. Since this is a live discussion, if, if you could step up to the podium, that way the sound recorder can record your response.
On our property, like, on either side of the kennel, it's still our property. It's still wooded, so, and it's not going to be changed. It's already going to be back further to accommodate for a small parking lot. It's not going to be some huge, it's gravel, it's going to have space for handicap, but it's not a huge parking lot. I won't have a lot of traffic that's going to change anything. And as far as noise, you know, it's set back enough. If I need to set it back a little bit further, I will, but it's not going to be a concern. And there's not a house that's visible from the front of the property at all, so.
There is one that sits back to the left, is there? Is there not?
It's-
Back and far to the left hand side.
If we're facing the road from my side.
Okay, then it'd be to the right, but.
If I'm facing the road for my property, there's one that's like that, but you can't see it from the road.
Okay, that might be the one we're talking about.
But it's not going to be a-
You stated this is unzoned, right?
Yes, it is currently unzoned.
And we had already planned on putting the sightings in the kennels and stuff where they can't see, and it's private fence, so they won't see around anything.
Is that good on that? All in favor of approving the said request on the dog boarding facility? Raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Our next is a vote and discussion regarding the proposed telecom tower that's going to be located off Lake Vault Road, file 75 double R double R 010 triple R. It meets all the specs, all the requirements, and I don't see anything that really can, you know, fail with. You got any statements on it?
Well, just one comment. One of their requirements that's in the package, the FCC requirement, just saying that they are licensed. They're just, they have to have some, something from us before they get their finals on that. But everything is licensed and where they should be at this stage.
So someone would like to entertain a motion to approve it, pending that.
Second.
Is the motion second that we approve the telecom tower request with the fact that they get the proper papers from FCC, right? FCC, FCC need to send it, like, they need to-
They're licensed. So the, once there's an approval from the county, then of course, they'll send another letter approving that exact tower. But every, everything that they need to have at this point is obtained.
Okay. All in favor of said motion? Raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. All right, and now we have the discussion to vote, proposing change to the county RV park ordinance. Get a motion to follow on with that. In discussion?
Yes.
So, yeah, I was about to stop you. We discussed, where did I put that? We discussed quite a few additions and changes. As noted, I'm going to hand this to Haddon. If y'all just look at my check marks on the side, then that, you'll make an amendment to approve these modifications to what you have tonight. And then after you voted on the amendment, then you have to vote on the original motion. So one of you will need to make a motion to amend to include those changes. You'll have to vote on it. Then you'll have to vote on the original motion to approve.
Intertain a motion to amend. Second. Second.
Have y'all made a motion?
I made them.
So I'm going to read them, just so that they're on the public record, and then y'all can vote on that. All right, so the first proposed change for tonight will be RV park shall be at least five continuous acres, not separated by a roadway or road right of way or any water body, including creek streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. The second change for the amendment is RV park shall be developed. I rewrote that. No filling of wetlands for development of RV park or no delineation of the property. The next one is all drives shall be located at least 150 feet from any street intersection and shall be designated in a manner conducted to save ingress and egress on the county voting. The next one is an approved RV park cannot be multiused and is restricted to the primary use, which is approved for. Next one is if an RV park ceases operation for a period greater than six months, the owner must restore its original condition. Next one is all streams and other waterways must be clearly identified in any RV park development proposal. That is all the proposed changes from what you have inside of your packet already.
You made the motion. All in. We got motion second for the amendment added to our, our, our ordinance for RV park, all in favor of said motion, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. That being said, that we voted on the original motion, all in favor of passing the amendment proposed changes to the RV park. Raise your right hand. Our next is a vote and discussion on the recommended tree preservation ordinance. Any motion on that?
Second.
Motion is second that we approve the recommended tree preservation ordinance. In discussion? No discussion, all in favor of said, vote, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Our next is our vote and discussion on the recommended preferred tree list. Need a motion to approve it?
Second.
Second, yeah, your second.
Second.
Second, okay. In discussion?
Yes. We had mentioned taking this out of ordinances and just referring to it, so it's easier-
So you can recommend it as normal, and then when it gets to council, I will actually modify the ordinance and have them change it on first reading to just include it in reference inside the ordinance itself. That way, it can be changed by resolution instead of changed by ordinance.
And are, on that list, are we, we're open to, you know, having a discussion with Mr. Allen and, and David and Commission on reviewing that list?
Absolutely, anytime.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor of said motion, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Next is a vote and discussion on Jerry Muda zoning application. Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? In discussions? No discussion, all in favor of said motion, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Next is do you vote on Lisa's zoning application? Motion?
Second. Oh, I thought you made a motion.
Make a motion.
In discussion?
No.
No discussion? All in favor of said motion, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Okay. All right, that's all we have on the agenda here. I have a closing statement here to the ordinance here, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say the planning commission, we heard discussion regarding an appeal being filed. Now, I want to clarify that this is not the appropriate time for such an action at this time. There's no legal basis for appeal regarding any current application that been put in. We getting emails and phone calls and all. Once a decision been made on a final development plan, any interested parties wishing to request an appeal may bring it before the planning commission for consideration. Until that time, any attempt to appeal decisions made by the county will not be addressed at this planning commission sometime in the future. Thank you all for attending the night meeting and for your continued engagement with our work. And I believe that we will have something, something on the next agenda, right? Am I correct? Not on that.
So, well, in October, of course, that's the deadline for that application, so some action will be taken.
Will be taken at the nation.
But it doesn't have anything to do with an appeal.
Okay, right, okay. Everyone understand that, all right? We appreciate you coming, appreciate your concern, and at this time, I need a motion.
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight as well. And I wanted to let everyone know, we have been blessed. We have been so overwhelmingly blessed to have David Caddell and Andrew Marine, Doc, and April. There are no four people who work harder for this county, in my opinion. And I know what they do for us, which, they keep us in line as far as letting us know what we're looking at. They do a great job anytime I call. They drop their stuff, they answer my questions, and it's nothing but a stellar staff. And in the future, just remember, they're doing their jobs and they're doing a great job at it. I am so impressed with them and all of them. So let's, in lieu of what's happened yesterday, we can respectfully have discourse. And I want us to remember that because if we can't discuss things in a peaceful manner, one of us may learn something and one may not. But we both could learn something if we take it on with both ears open. So thank you. I just wanted, I just felt the need because last week's, last month seemed a little edgy. So I just wanted to pass on that. And thank you all, both of you.
Thank you, Elise, for that comment, and I agree with her 100% on that, and we appreciate. And all of you that work up here, we know it, it take time. And it's not a paid job. Every day, they owe me a lot of back pay. So I'm fine. But anyway, seriously, right? So it take a lot of time and energy. We get phone call, we get emails and all this, so we have to take calm and then, you know, to leave, do what's right. At this time, we will adjourn the meeting, get a motion adjourned.